Good morning and half a day. The public hearing on Bill 191-37-COR is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, December 12, 2023. The time now is nine o'clock. In compliance with the open government law, the notice for this public hearing were posted on GovGuam Public Notice Portal, KGTF PBS Channel 12, and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, November 28, and then on Thursday, November 7. Bill 191-37 was introduced by Senator Will Parkinson, an act to add a new chapter 81 of Division 2, Title 21 Guam Code Antedote, relative to mandating all Governor Guam lease offices to be ADA compliant. And to cite this act, the Governor Guam ADA Compliance Act of 2023. A physical note was received and disseminates all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on November 1. Those participating on Bill 191-37-COR are invited to the panel. General rules of this public hearing. Please provide my legislative staff with any documents for photocopying and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony may be desired by members of the committee. Will the members that are going to testify, please come forward? Ma'am, sir, come forward and please have a seat. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for these proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from participating and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning and thank them for attending. We have the author of the bill, Bill 191, Senator Will Parkinson to my left. We have Senator Brown, who will have Bill 167 heard immediately after this bill. We have Senator Jesse Luan also.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, I'd like to ask Senator Will Parkinson to make his opening statement. And then we'll begin immediately after that with testimony from the panel. And if I ask the panel, please state your name, where you're from, and so forth before you speak. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for being here today. And thank you to Senator Sinagastin for holding this public hearing today. Earlier this year, I introduced Bill 98, which seeks to make all GDOE schools compliant with the American with Disabilities Act, more commonly known as the ADA. I was thankful, of course, for all the positive feedback on the bill and the amount of support shown from the bill from the superintendent, from parents, from lawyers, and from our private citizens. However, I was also angry, disappointed, and devastated. From that hearing, I realized that the issue of ADA compliance goes far beyond a few of our public schools not having ramps for students in wheelchairs. The issue of ADA compliance centers around two things: inclusivity and fairness. We saw a lot of support for Bill 98. We saw a lot of support to help our disabled kids. But the obstacles they face go beyond just their classroom. And many adults with disabilities still struggle with their day-to-day activities due to ADA noncompliance. This led me to introducing the bill we are hearing today, Bill 191-37-COR. Since 1990, the ADA has been a cornerstone of federal legislation for promoting equal opportunity for people with disabilities. However, not all Government of Guam offices meet these requirements. Under Bill 191, all government lease offices will be required to adhere to ADA guidelines, ensuring that people with disabilities have equal access to public services, facilities, and employment opportunities. By making these spaces ADA compliant, our government is taking the lead in creating a more inclusive environment where individuals with disabilities can participate fully in civic life. This legislation is a crucial step forward in our commitment to creating an inclusive society where everyone, regardless of their abilities, can engage fully and enjoy the same opportunities as their fellow citizens. It is absolutely essential that our government set an example in adhering to the highest standards of accessibility. If someone needs to talk to a senator, get their passport renewed, or do anything that requires them to step foot into a GovGuam agency, there should be no physical barriers that would prevent them from doing so. Additionally, Bill 191 along with my previous ADA bill makes the job of caretakers of persons with disabilities less physically demanding. My father, former Speaker Don Parkinson, developed Parkinson's disease in his later years, which required him to be pushed around in a wheelchair. As his primary caretaker, I pushed my father in his wheelchair through cities that were not ADA compliant. We would have to push him through obstacles that took not a physical toll but mental and emotional tolls as well. Being a caretaker is one of the hardest things to do in this world. It requires so much of a person's physical and mental strength, and our schools and government agencies not being ADA compliant only adds to this hardship. I'd also like to note that I'll be introducing companion legislation to reinstate DISID's Division of Evaluation, Enforcement, and Compliance to ensure that compliance with this bill, should it be passed, will be followed through. Our government must set an example. And Bill 191 shows our government's dedication to creating a more inclusive society where everyone can fully participate in the civic life of our island. Thank you again for being here today, everyone. I look forward to hearing your testimony on this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Ms. Perez, if you can go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we'll proceed with Mr. Warfield. All right?
Half a day and good morning. My name is Michelle Perez. I am the Director of DISID. Good morning, Senator Luan, Senator Sinagastin, Senator Parkinson, Senator Brown, and Senator Tadegui. As I mentioned, I'm Michelle Perez. I'm the Director of DISID. And to my right is Mr. Jeffrey Warfield. He is also a representative of DISID and basically my right hand for now. Half a day. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 191-37-COR, recognized as the Government of Guam ADA Compliance Act of 2023. This legislation is on behalf of the Guam Department of-- I'm sorry. The submission is on behalf of the Guam Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disability, also known as DISID. Firstly, we'd like to thank you for acknowledging the needs and rights of those within the community who deserve equal accessibility to all government agencies. Inclusion for all must be our mandate. And we cannot achieve that until we first acknowledge the need and, secondly, move to fill the gaps that hinder full inclusion. The Americans Disability Act, ADA, is a federal act that prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities in several areas, including employment, transportation, public accommodations, communication, and access to state and local government programs and services. The ADA defines several federal agencies to enforce specific titles of the ADA and investigate claims, including the U.S. Department of Justice, the U.S. Equal Opportunity Commission, the U.S. Department of Labor, the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Federal Communications Commission, the U.S. Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and the Architectural and Transportation Barriers Compliance Board, otherwise known as the Access Board. The Access Board issues the ADA standards for accessible design, the ADA standards, which state what is required for a building or facility to be physically accessible to people with disabilities. The ADA standard covers newly constructed buildings and facilities, alterations such as renovations and other changes that affect usability made to buildings and facilities, making architectural changes in existing state and local government buildings to provide program access, and removing architectural barriers that are easily accomplishable without much difficulty or expense in existing buildings of businesses. These standards apply to places of public accommodation, commercial facilities, and state and local government facilities, which are identified in the definition of accessibility standards in Section 81102B of the bill. These standards are enforced by federal agencies, such as the U.S. Department of Justice and the U.S. Access Board. The DOG enforces ADA regulations through its Civil Rights Division. They investigate complaints, issue fines, and file lawsuits against violators. Meanwhile, the U.S. Access Board develops guidelines for accessibility in public buildings that must be adhered to in order to receive federal funding. In researching the practices of California, we found that it has a Department of Rehabilitation that provides services resulting in employment, independent living, and equality for individuals with disabilities, and administers vocational rehabilitation and independent living programs, much like what the primary mandate of DISID is. However, the state also has a separate agency called the California Civil Rights Department, which enforces the state's civil rights laws and investigates civil right complaints, which seems to be more aligned with the intent of this legislation. California also uses Certified Access Specialists, also known as CAPS, who are people who have been tested and certified by the state and whom business owners can hire to access accessibility. SB 1608 sets up a process where business owners can voluntarily hire a CAPS to inspect their buildings to ensure compliance with disability access standards and obtain an inspection report as proof of inspection. A business implementing recommendations of a CAPS would be entitled to a 90-day hold on any legal proceedings and is eligible for any early evaluation conference. At the moment, DISID does not have a CAPS or similar people with the expertise to certify compliance with the ADA. However, we do provide advocacy and limited guidance when requested by the general public. It is also important to note that several years ago, DISID received guidance from the Office of the Attorney General that the responsibility for enforcement is with the OAG. In the future, DISID, with the appropriate expertise, looks forward to providing more assistance with ADA compliance. We recommend that the bill be streamlined to simply require that ADA compliance be included in the specifications of the request for proposals for government lease offices and as a provision in all government leases expressed as the appropriate responsibility of the leaser rather than the leasing. Overall, we do feel Bill 191-37 is-- has a worthwhile intent, but we offer the above recommendation and considerations. We again express our sincere gratitude for the opportunity to make public comment on Bill 191-37 and are firmly in support of efforts to address the functional needs and accessibility challenge that our constituents and visitors to Guam must contend with on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Is there a right-hand man going to speak on the bill or no?
I believe we're just here more for questions or any suggestions that you need.
All right. Okay. Senator Parkinson, do you have any question or would you like to wait until the end?
Just a quick comment. I wasn't aware that the OAG had opined in opinion several years before that the OAG would be responsible. I envisioned DISID being the enforcement agency, but you know what? If the OAG has said that they're the enforcement agency, I'm good with that, too.
Jeff Warfield, Special Projects Coordinator with DISID. Just to address your comment, Mr. Parkinson, the way the OAG presented it to us, and this was maybe as far back as 2014, 2012. In their opinion, they laid out a process wherein if a complaint was made from the public regarding accessibility, the first step at that time would be-- and usually the question came to us just as a matter of fact as to who we are. The question would come to us, and it was laid out that we would do perhaps a preliminary investigation just to go out, do a site visit, make note, see what we find. And if we could make simple recommendations, then we would. If it came down to the issue of complaint being issued or a more formal process, we would make a referral to DPW as they are the body responsible for issuing permits and things of that nature, who could then make a more formal complaint which would trigger timetables, wherein the business owner or agency would have a certain number of days to address the issue or ask for an extension. If they were noncompliant, DPW would then forward it to the Attorney General's Office for then formal prosecution. So the ultimate prosecution and enforcement was with the Attorney General's Office, but there were steps that would be taken prior to that.
Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. I'd like to also recognize my vice chair that's joined us this morning, Senator Tadegui. Senator Tadegui, do you have any questions you want to pose? All right. Okay. Senator Brown, do you have any questions?
I also want to ask-- I mean, we know a number of government agencies are not compliant, and they're not leased buildings. They're owned by the government of Guam. How, if at all, are you having those addressed? Because it references lease properties in the bill. How are you dealing with the existing government buildings?
So, thank you for the question. We actually recently just got-- we met with DRT. They actually wanted some guidance from us to help ensure that they were providing as much accommodations as possible with the current building that they're in, which is also a leased building, but also just providing the service in another way because the building may not be fully ADA compliant. And with that, we went and we did a walkthrough, and we provided some suggestions, but also they provided how they're accommodating the constituents now, which has worked out perfectly. So they've made accommodations, basic modifications and accommodations to meet the needs of the customer client, per se. As far as government-owned buildings, we haven't done any-- I don't want to say inspections, but walkthroughs recently with any of those. The most recent, I can say, is when we were at the Baragada Mayor's Office. We worked in conjunction with the Baragada Mayor as well as Public Health when we did a COVID-- we were doing immunizations for COVID shots at the facility. And there were some areas-- obviously, it's an older building, government-owned, so we tried to work with them as well as Guam Legal Services. We all came in and we kind of worked with the mayor's office to try and find other ways to accommodate the clients that were coming in for the immunization. So although all the buildings may not be compliant, they are trying their best to figure out other ways to accommodate at this time.
I'm assuming in the law previously, though, that there are a number of old buildings that were grandfathered in. As you notice, there's a lot of other buildings that have been around a long time that are not accessible at all. And they're authorized by law because of the timeline of when they were constructed, so it didn't put a, I guess, significant financial impact on the owners of those properties. So do you have any comment on that?
Yes. Good morning, Senator Brown. Specifically to what you just said. So anything constructed prior to, I believe, 1992. They don't like to say grandfathered in, even though we all do.
Sure.
That's just the easiest way to understand it. But they won't be considered noncompliant necessarily because of when they were built. However, if those buildings undergo what's considered major renovation, then at that point, they are required to become completely ADA compliant. So if they're doing something such as complete remodel, if they're adding elevators to a building that didn't previously have elevators, that's going to be considered major renovation. And at that point, they need to become fully compliant. The other issue I wanted to bring up in thinking about the Baragada Mayor's Office and Rev. Tax. So there's facility accessibility and program accessibility. And so one of the big things we were pointing out with Rev. Tax, they've implemented various accommodations because of the age of their building, certain areas where there's beams in the warehouse that wheelchairs can't get through. They will accommodate by bringing their personnel out. Or if they have, say, five interview rooms, they will make sure that two of the five are accessible. So that means their program is accessible even though the building, the facility itself, may not be fully accessible. If your program is accessible, that's the more important thing, right? For citizens to be able to gain and avail of the services that are being offered. But there's still the provision and concept of making sure going forward that it is a forethought, not an afterthought, about your facilities being accessible. Also, going back to Baragada, when we were setting up that program, we also had Guam Legal Services involved because a lot of their constituents are either elderly or people with disabilities. So that, again, on the front end, we're getting as much input as possible from as many members of the community to understand what are the issues to make sure we're thinking about everything. That's the goal.
What work are you doing with DPW? Because I also find that even though we have an expectation, even new construction, even that it's in compliance, during the time I was there Director, we'd find that that was not the case, even with regards to road construction, being able to access sidewalks that have telephone poles sticking out of the center of them. So what work are you doing with them? Because I'm a little concerned that while they're inspecting for their requirements, I don't believe they've consistently inspected to the degree of ensuring accessibility with regards to new construction. And that can include ensuring the right amount of parking slots are available for the level of occupancy of a building. The ramps are in proper place. The restroom facilities are designed properly. I mean, in most cases, you assume that that's the case, but you get down to the fine details. Sometimes that is not being done by the inspectors. A lot of things that are not being done sometimes by the inspectors. And assuming the inspectors are acting above board, which we have a history in the government, unfortunately, that that's not and has not always been the case. So do you have a working relationship with them? Are you involved in reviewing any type of-- I don't expect you to look at blueprints, but are you looking at the actual construction of these projects? Or what relationship do you have with them to make sure there's that level of awareness and sensitivity moving forward with regards to new construction? Because there's a lot of buildings since 1992 or '91. If we're going to go around, I think we'd find a number of violations that are not in compliance with accessibility laws.
So what we've done in the last couple of years is directly with-- not just directly with DPW, but other government agencies is we've provided workshops with regards to ADA accessibility parking, just overall sensitivity and disability awareness training. But of course, there's always room for more intense collaboration specifically with DPW. And we've worked with them before, and I think that we just need to collaborate more. Obviously, staffing is an issue, but we work with what we have. So they have come to us before with regards to some ADA compliance. And in the most recent years, previous Director, Director Liang Guo, she has actually had some collaboration with the Director and the Deputy at the time specifically to ADA compliance because of all the complaints we've been getting. So it's there. Of course, there's room for improvement to get more involved with that. And definitely, we will reach out even more. And they do the same for us.
My last question is if someone in the public or a person who may also be disabled encounters a situation, be it a government or even a private building that's accessible to the public-- could be a shopping center or something like that-- who do they call? And if your office takes the complaints, where does it go? Just so people know that hopefully they'll be a response to their concern?
So at this time, we do get those complaints. And as mentioned earlier in the testimony, we don't really have the specific expertise to give legal advice. But what we do is we seek that advice from other entities like the AG's office. Or if it's just a very simple complaint of, you know, this person's parking in an accessible parking slot, and we know she doesn't have a placard that belongs to her uncle, but she uses the car, stuff like that, we actually have someone go out, like myself or Jeff or sometimes another social worker. And we approach it in a proactive way. We basically talk to the landlord or the owner of the building and just say, hey, you know, we got this inquiry. We got this complaint about this. Perhaps you may-- in order to be compliant or to help you out with this, we have-- these are some of the guidelines that are updated that you perhaps may want to take a look at to retrofit your building to meet the standards so that you don't continue to get the complaints. But if it's something more intense that we know it's not an enforcement-- if it's an enforcement thing, we definitely send that to the AG's office. We don't even touch that. But other things, like if they need to know how many accessible parking slots is their building up to code because they just moved in, then we usually show them the updated brochure of the accessible parking, and then we go from there.
Do you know at all if the Attorney General's Office is following through with it? I mean, I know they have a lot of things on their list. I mean, we have issues with regards to enforcement of, you know, even with regards to environmental enforcement out there. Do you get any feedback at all when you make these complaints as to the status or if any actions taken on any of these complaints that come in or violations?
In the last several years, and I've gone out to do quite a few site inspections, some based on complaints, but some, like McDonald's, for instance, here in Aganga, when they were doing some renovation, they called us and said, hey, you know, we're doing some things with our ramps. Do you mind coming out, taking a look? We just want to make sure we're making this accessible. We're abiding by the guidelines. But I've gone out there to McDonald's. I've gone out to American Medical Center. Oh, I'm sorry. It's the medical center going towards the hospital on the left. They were doing some renovation, and they requested us to come out. And usually what happens, they're usually quite collegial about it and wanting to do the right thing. They just want the guidance. We've not had to make referrals to the AG's office because I'll go out, I'll take pictures, we'll talk. And ultimately, when we're done, I'll do a small report saying, here's some of the things we saw. Here's some of the things you might want to be concerned about. More importantly, though, I can't give you legal advice, but here's some of the language you should look at to make sure you're in compliance. And for the most part, that's usually enough to get things going in the proper direction. So we haven't had a lot of referrals that needed to go all the way up to the AG's office lately.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for responding to my questions. Thank you very much, Mr.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Let us also recognize Senator Roy Canathas joined us this morning. Senator Luhon, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. You know, I know my colleague, Senator Brown, touched on this. In 2001, Timon Lo versus Gov Guam and DPW, there was a settlement that was filed in the US District Court where the agency had to come up, required to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. In your testimony, again, you had said that the standards are enforced by federal agencies, such as, you know, the Department of Justice, DOJ, and the US Access Board. A lot of these federal, I mean, these highways, like Marine Drive, they're federally funded. There was, in part of that agreement, the total cost for all projects were $41 million to be funded by the Federal Highway Administration back in the settlement. What, because since 2001 to now, I mean, what has that $41 million gone to at this point to make the corrections based on the settlement that was brought forth with the US District Court with the Timon Lo versus Gov Guam DPW? Because I don't see any changes in, again, the main thoroughfares and the sidewalks to accommodate, again, you know, what the suit was about, the accessibility for wheelchair chairs to traverse around these. I know this is not your agency, but maybe you can have more knowledge than we do as what is being done. Did that $40 million come in? And where did it go to? Because the suit that was brought about, since 2001, I have not seen any changes in the roadways in regards to that particular case.
I apologize, Senator, but I would not have any information on that. That would be a question for DPW.
Okay, okay. And again, the compliance, again, as Senator Brown had mentioned as well, not being, I mean, adhered to. And that's my question, is that? Because if there was a settlement and $41 million came in for that particular situation, it wasn't used to correct that. And I wonder where that case is. Let me ask you, you had said about buildings that were, I guess, constructed prior to 1992. And you don't like to use the word grandfathered, but I guess if the program is accessible, maybe not, the building is not real accessible, but the programs are. How about these buildings that Gov Guam agencies are moving into that are needing to be, I guess, repurposed? You know, to accommodate, again, their cubicles and things of that nature? How is that defined? Because, again, if it's remodeled, they have to adhere, right, to the current laws of accessibility? But if an agency is moving in and you're doing some kind of remodeling to accommodate their needs, wouldn't they also have to, wouldn't that fall under the definition that you also have to adhere to the ADA compliance?
Thank you, Senator Luhon. So the language that the ADA uses with regards to accessibility, accommodations, et cetera, when you get to the end of that process, the answer, when the question is asked, do they have to make these accessibility steps? The question, two questions are answered. One, is it an undue hardship to do it? Meaning overly ridiculously expensive? And two, is the accommodation reasonable under the circumstances? So for instance, if you're moving into a building and you're putting up cubicles and things of that nature, that's not going to fit the criteria for major renovation. However, and again, this is, I'm going to speak from personal experience with some agencies, we do go out, we'll take the measurements. We'll say, well, this pathway is not accessible. It needs to be 36 inches. It's only 32, or this doorway isn't. And again, we don't have the enforcement capability there, but what we see is they will start to do those things. Now, it's not just accessibility for the public, but also for the employees.
Sure.
So if there's an employee, let's say a building is multiple stories. The first floor is customers only, consumers only. Well, that's one level of accessibility. But if there's an employee that his department's on the second floor, now all of these accessibility issues are going to trigger for the worker as well. And so then the agency business owner becomes responsible for making sure those steps are met. But the keys are undue hardship and reasonable under the circumstances.
Yeah, because, you know, I've seen some agents as well. And as you said, I mean, their walkway, basically, is real narrow. And, you know, even yourself, walking down, you know, it's quite a squeeze to walk down, let alone maybe a bigger person or even a, you know, a person with some disabilities to walk down that path as well. The other thing is what I've seen, and again, it's not your entity, but what I've seen in compliance issues, right? Compliance issues where maybe private entities are now having been told to comply because their buildings were built way before, you know, the ADA compliance kicked in. But even yourselves, like especially in the bathrooms, when you open the door, you say you can hardly open the door. I mean, they make accommodation, they put the railings, you know. I mean, and it looks like in compliance, but even a person that goes in, you go, man, I can hardly get in. So imagine a person traversing a wheelchair. All that is, how the heck? I mean, it looks compliant, you know? Looks compliant, and it fits all the criteria of a person who is challenged physically getting there. But there's no way you can traverse a wheelchair into that and maneuver and do all that. And I'm just wondering, again, and it's not your entity to, for the compliance issue, but I see where, again, they're told to comply, and it looks compliant, but how the heck did they pass inspection to be really compliant? You know, as newer buildings are, where really, I mean, you know, doors are wider and the stalls are wider. You have, you know, certain stalls that are for persons with disabilities with all that. But, you know, it's just, now with the compliance issue, the restroom facility becomes smaller now because of the railings and all that. But, you know, the structure hasn't gotten bigger. It just got smaller, and it looks compliant. I'm sure you've seen that as well, right? Any comments of that?
Nothing new. And because, yes, we all see it.
Yeah.
We all experience it. And again, you know, the biggest role that our agency is able to play at this point is we do the inspections, we do the technical assistance, and we make the suggestions, right? If it's something we need to forward on, we can forward it, but ultimately, it moves from our hands at that point. We don't have any mechanism to enforce it, to make sure it happens.
Let me ask you this again, because can we give you more teeth then? Can we give you more power for compliance? Because, and you know, when we see this, and yeah, what can we do to give you? I mean, no, of course, staffing, more money and all that. But what can we do to give you more power to? Because you're the agencies that look at it, and we see it, and we're not blaming you for all that because, of course, the agencies that are tasked with the compliance issue. But how can we help you, give you more teeth to make sure that when you write to them, that, you know, this is gospel? You better comply, you know? Because the next time, the next time I'm writing to you, it's not going to be as nice. You know, how can we, how can we, how can we help you with that?
I think that the enforcement should still continue to stay with the AG's office because it is a federal statute.
Sure.
I think our role, DISIT's role, is basically just for technical assistance and, you know, finding the other guidance, finding guidance out there that we can't assist with and referring it to the correct entity. As far as enforcement, I really don't believe that DISIT should be the enforcer.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this, okay? And, okay, that being said, that being said, in regards to complying and staying with the AGs, and I agree with that. And we have a new AG who's the toughest AG on crime, you know? And of course, he's going after, of course, potholes and things like that. You got to fix these roads. Look, you got to fix these roads. Well, we have situations here too where we see it as being compliant, but it's really not. How closely are you working with the AG then in regards to compliance issues? Because if, you know, maybe these things should be brought up as well and be part of a AG's function. I mean, it is AG's function, but to have him or his investigators to go out and say, hey, because these are our people. And again, you don't have to be a person with disability. Each one of us, as we get older, we are going to be, we are going to have disabilities. And it's not just for a person maybe in a wheelchair and things like that because we all are, if we live long enough, are going to be physically challenged. And so I'm, you know, even a facility that's compliant, older people that are, again, physically challenged because of age. And we need to make this a priority too. It's got to be a priority. We have an aging community. You know, the younger folks are moving away, and the older ones are staying behind. And so this needs to be a priority. And so I will talk to the Attorney General as well to, you know, work closely with you. Are you working closely with the AG at this point?
With regards to ADA compliance, we have not had any communication in the last year, year or two. It's just more, you know, when we seek guidance, then we reach out. But that's about it.
Okay, well, I would talk to the AG and maybe send a letter to the AG as well to maybe be in communication with your office. And again, because we're, you know, we're, and Senator Parks knows this, I mean, you know, in regards to power, water, you know, road repairs and things of that nature, the AG's on top of that. And this is something that's highly important as well, that we should be on top. And again, I would write to the AG and work closely with your agency. You are the technical people, and you work hand in hand, him as being, or their office as being the, again, the enforcers of compliance issue. But thank you very much for your testimony this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Telo, you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues as well as those who are here to testify from DISIT. Thank you so much for being here and providing your insight onto this legislation. So Director Paris, have you had the opportunity to read the fiscal note by BBMR?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And just for the record, I just wanted to read it into the record that according to DISIT, according to, I'm sorry, BBMR, and I'm quoting them, they say, according to DISIT, they do not have the staff or funding to implement Bill 191-37 if it becomes law. It is imperative to ensure that DISIT is adequately funded if this bill is passed so that the agency can comply with the mandate responsibilities that this bill will place on it. DISIT will need to hire at least seven staff to start up this division in order to meet the requirements and guidelines under the Government of Guam ADA Compliance Act. In addition, computers, two vehicles, supplies and materials will need to be purchased to meet their operational needs. In light of the above, an a proctive to facilitate ADA compliance. The positions that are likely needed by DISIT and applicable agencies and departments to implement the requirements of this proposed bill are an ADA coordinator and an ADA administrator. And the annual salary of the ADA coordinator is $49,731, and the annual salary of an ADA administrator is $67,696. Further, the proposed legislation does not identify, does not identify a funding source to adequately fund the division that DISIT would need to establish or the staff to implement requirements detailed in the bill. Lastly, the bill requires the applicable agencies and departments to allocate funding to achieve compliance, which was not budgeted for FY '24. My biggest concern is, you know, having any kind of bill come forward and not have the funding source in order to implement this. And I think we're, you know, the people of Guam are getting pretty sick and tired of, you know, showboating up here instead of, you know, really putting our teeth to something that's really needed, especially when it comes to compliance with ADD and especially when it comes to those that you service at DISIT. And I've introduced several legislations to help those with disabilities, you know? And it's unfortunate, you know? Because though it sounds like a good law, you know, it sounds good. Show me the money. And I'm sure you're saying the same thing. Please show me the money because we don't have it. And what's even worse about it is that it's even hard to find these specialized individuals that have the qualification needed to comply with this law and to be able to do a good job. Not just pick somebody out who waved on the side of the road or, you know, for some campaign, you know, you know, get back, you know, for what I did for waving kind of scenario, but somebody who has the qualifications. And we don't have that workforce here. It's unfortunate. Many people are leaving. Huge exodus in Guam that's happening right now. And many of them have, are very much qualified for positions like this. Now, I know you do everything you can to get grants, you know, to provide grants. But if I'm not mistaken, once upon a time, the Attorney General's Office actually had somebody in there that was a, if I'm not mistaken, a coordinator, ADA coordinator position in the Attorney General's Office. So obviously, they had funding at one, once upon a time to do this. And I just heard that you really haven't spoken to them. But when you do speak to them, if you can ask them if that person is still there, right? Because I know that was done, gosh, back in, I want to say, late 1990s or, you know, the beginning of 2000, that coordinator position was at the Attorney General's Office. And what DISIT did was just put out citations. And these citations were then, you know, submitted to the Attorney General, and they were the enforcement behind it. But once again, you know, I don't know how you're going to implement this legislation without any funding. Do you have some money there or what? No, you don't. Okay, so for the record, do you have any money to cover this?
With our current budget, we do not have any money.
Okay. And if you were to do this, and let's say you start this in 2025, let's say, you know, would you then, let's say if we, this bill is moved to not be enacted until FY '25, so you would be able to provide a budget to this body when it comes budget time to cover this particular legislation?
If the bill is passed and is in part of legislation, then we would request for this amount, this budget, to be part of our overall budget.
Okay, so you would also request that it's enacted in 2025, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we got to find the money first. And then, of course, we have to sustain this every year after that, right? There also says something here about computers, two vehicles, supplies and material that will be needed too, especially if you have to go out and inspect these agencies, correct?
I'm sorry, Senator, I didn't.
I'm sorry, yeah, I know the echo in here, even me. I could very, sometimes can't understand what people are saying. So it says that computers, two vehicles are needed? Is that something really needed? Do you have vehicles in your office right now that can actually go out and inspect?
We currently have one vehicle.
So you'll probably need two more, yeah. The measure includes federal government, you know?
Senator Tito, I don't know if it's redundant per se.
Senator Tiede, I, I don't know if it's redundant per se. Because I feel like we can have a multi-tiered approach in addressing these issues, meaning various agencies can play different roles in addressing it. Ultimately, and, and actually, it was one of the questions I had as I was reading the bill, is it, um, as it exists, these are prosecuted as civil rights violations in federal court. Uh, states do however, and I think California is mentioned in our written testimony, states like California do however, have setups where they can do it as well. So it doesn't go against, I guess, federal laws, rules and regulations. It's just a, a matter of them being able to address it on a state level without it getting to the federal level. But we don't have anything like that in place at this point. So for now, anything that rises to the level of prosecution has to be prosecuted as a civil rights violation. Uh, if there were more substantive Guam law that specifically addressed it and allowed for it, I don't think it would be redundant per se. I hope that kind of answers.
Okay. You know, within each agency, based on legislation, will the responsibility, uh, who or will the responsibility for disability compliance regulations and training that will be necessary to, you know, for these accommodations, um, who within the agencies will have this job? Will they have to be individually trained, like every agency? They would have to have somebody with that type of training and?
So, um, what, what is happening currently is every agency has a designated ADA, do they call them coordinators? Like coordinators or representatives in each agency. Now, per se, that's not their specific role. That's not all they do. They're basically kind of, that's an additional task that they've taken on. And what we do at DISIT is we provide, like I mentioned earlier, workshops and trainings for the different agencies. And what, what they, what the agencies do is they actually ask us questions or give us scenarios of what may be some of the challenges they have at their agency, whether it be parking, whether it be service accommodations and so forth. And then that's where the, um, the guidance is given. And then that's where, mainly it's Jeff who does that. He, he, or he'll go out to the agency and talk to them and say, hey, maybe you do it this way. Or what have you been doing? No, that's, what you're doing is act, actually great. You're actually providing reasonable accommodations.
So, so that being said, can you confirm that every agency in the Government of Guam who has a coordinator there, um, there is one there in every agency?
Actually, uh, we're in the process of updating that list right now as we speak. We plan to have our next workshop, uh, in January. We know that some people have left. Uh, I would also like to point out though that this happens in an informal way. So those people, even though they are identified by their agencies as ADA coordinators, uh, it's not part of their formal job description, it's not part of their duties per se, right? It's not, um, this is just an extra task that they're taking on, that they're willing to do. So none of them have quote unquote certification or training other than what we do in the workshops, right? So it's more informal. We'll, we'll, we use the title ADA coordinator, and that's fine, that's legal, there's nothing wrong with that, but it still doesn't carry the weight of having a certification, right? A formalized certification.
Do you have funding for that, that training?
We have no additional funding for that. It's just, um, once COVID hit, we started doing most of it virtually.
Do you put it in your budget?
We have not.
Why not?
Um, so Senator, I just, uh, with regards to that, in the last year or two, we've actually, um, been collaborating with Pacific ADA, and they had mentioned to us there may be some source, minimal source of funding that they, that DISIT can receive because of the fact that we're going out there and providing disability and sensitivity awareness training, any type of ADA training workshops that we are providing. So they can basically give us funding because of that. So, um, it's one source of funding. We're, we've been working with them. We lost touch for a bit, but then we're trying to get back that, that back up and running.
Yeah. And it's obvious, Director Paris, that, you know, the, that your agency is going to have to have its own separate, I mean, with this legislation that's required, it's, it's a lot of work, you know, especially when it comes to training. And, um, these certifications are really needed, you know? If you're gonna do this right, you know, not just half, you know, halfway through and... So that being said, um, I think, you know, to sit down and, and look at the funding on this and really what it's going to take to make something like this work. I mean, my office alone, we, I have several people I have on staff who, you know, have a disability and, um, they, you know, we do everything we can to accommodate their needs and assistance. And I greatly appreciate what Reverend Tax is doing actually. You know, when someone comes in, they don't have access, they, they make sure they take care of that individual. So I think every Government of Guam agency should do the same, you know, no matter what, you know, if they need to, to see somebody, that, that somebody comes to see them, it's, it's much, it's even better, but. So I greatly appreciate all the hard work you're doing, and, uh, this is added work on your table. And with that being said, I don't want to overstress the work that you do for those individuals with disabilities because it's, it's quite taxing physically and mentally, you know, for your staff. I know, I've seen you guys, you know, in the same building as you, so, um, please put down a real finite, um, report on the cost and what it's going to take for any kind of legislation like this to get together. And then maybe the suggestion of making it start in 2025, FY25, might be more conducive and, but we got to find the money first. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tiede. Senator Canata, do you have any questions for the panel?
Howdy, good morning. No, um, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank them for their presence today and thank you for their information and insight. Um, if you need any assistance, please let my office know, we stand ready to support it anyway. Thank you so much again. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Well, I got a few questions. Ms. Paris and Mr. Warfield, did you really read the bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just pause on that. I'm looking at your letter, I'm looking at BBMR's comments. And everything BBMR is saying, I don't see it in your letter, okay? So I have a conflict of that. I expect to see whatever BBMR wants to say. BBMR is not the Director of DISIT, okay? So whenever I see BBMR comment, I look for the agent and says, why don't you say that? I look at your letter, and your letter talks about all the federal requirements, understood, ADA's federal requirements, understand that. It talks about how other, other states enforce ADA, understood. Uh, recommend the bill be streamlined to simply require ADA compliance be included in the, the RFP. You know, when I look at the bill, the bill recommends if anybody's gonna rent and you're a GovGuam agency, you got to make sure you're in compliance with ADA. I think that makes it very easier for you folks because it also says they come to you for your guidance and approval. I don't think that's, that's, that's a no-brainer. Does that need money? No. Because if you're a GovGuam agency and you want to rent at this building, you got to make sure it meets ADA requirements, period. That's an easy one. No difference when I rented out where I'm at. I made sure there was, it's ADA compliant. They got an elevator, they got parking stalls. My biggest concern with GovGuam agencies, are there adequate number of parking stalls? Because I understand that how, how parking stalls are, are determined, I don't think it's by you guys, it's by Public Works for everywhere to be in compliance. If you drive up to any private business, you count the number of stalls, who enforces that? I think it's Public Works, isn't it? Isn't it part of the permit? Or is it part of your office?
We don't enforce at all.
No, 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 no. Do, do you provide any direction to anybody that's gonna build a building? And the answer is probably is not. It's Public Works.
Well, they get their permits from Public Works, of course, yes. So as far as anything that we do, it's if an individual or an entity comes and complains about it or asks us, is this actually in compliance? That's all we do.
And at the same token, exactly what you mentioned earlier, the enforcement is with the AG's office, okay? So really, if anybody has a complaint, they don't need to go to you guys, they'll just go to the AG's office and it's done. They're the enforcers. Am I correct?
They are the enforcers, but they still come to us.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not debating coming to you. All I'm just saying is if I wanted to make a complaint, I will go to the AG's office. I won't go to you guys because why are the enforcers, there's the AGs. Am I correct? And it's very, I'm trying to keep it simple, okay? I'm not, I'm not attacking you guys or anything, I'm just trying to make sure that the people who are watching this, this hearing understands that if you have an ADA issue, DISIT can help you, but the AG's office are the enforcers, period, right?
I, I think that's the most succinct way to say it.
Okay.
Um, but I, I just want to add something, um, in terms of the role we play. You know, part of our mandate is, is to be the, the entryway for services for individuals with disabilities, but also advocates. So a lot of the complaints I've dealt with come as anonymous complaints. We'll get the phone call from somebody with a disability, but they don't necessarily want to leave their name, they don't necessarily want to leave a return number, they're just like, hey, I was shopping at such and such location and this is what I noticed with the, uh, the ramp for the wheelchairs, or this is what I noticed with the guardrails or something of that nature. And, you know, and so in some instances, those constituents want to be heard, they want to know that their voice is being heard, they want to know that there's at least somebody to take it to a, a further level, not necessarily going directly to the Attorney General's Office. But the way you just described the process absolutely is, is accurate, yes.
I'm trying to keep it very simple because this bill is specifically to any GovGuam agency, if you want a lease out there, you got to be ADA compliant. Very simple, right? It never talks about money. BBMR is saying that you need more money? Well, you probably don't need the money, probably the AG's office needs the money so they can enforce, they can give out the citation because didn't your office used to give out citations for this at one time in its life?
As I understand it and from looking at previous legislation, it was, uh, for accessible parking. And that then went into the Accessible Parking Fund, which was for DISIT's use.
Yes.
As I understand it now, through several pieces of legislation, um, that no longer exists, so we don't have that ability anymore. I don't know if the Accessible Parking Fund is still active or available or accessible. But, so when we talk about the citation writing, as my understanding, that's as far as it went was to write citations for accessible parking violations, but that is no longer in statute.
Okay. Because I know for a fact that police officers do issue citations to be in the ADA, you know, the ADA parking, disability parking. I know that much. Because I used to give those out, okay? And, and, and when we talk about the, the funds you're talking about, maybe we need to look at that. Because we need to help you guys. Maybe we need to look at the court and says, hey, Spirit Guard, you got some money that needs to go to DISIT. And exactly like what Senator Telo brought up, we need to figure out how to help you guys. And maybe that's the source of funding to help you so that you can continue to advocate what you're doing, but be able to speak louder. And basically, when you start speaking, talking about ADA and all the, all the accessibility, maybe the AG's office will hear it. And when you speak about it, they can send their investigators out there to find out, ooh, there are issues out here. You know, and I'm not gonna slam the Attorney General Moilen, but don't talk about you being the enforcer and DISIT, or, or the folks with disabilities are not getting any support. We need to close that loop. Uh, and I know that his staff is probably listening to this hearing, which is good, it's, it's on his, on his behalf, it's good. But as far as I'm concerned, bill only says, everybody, the one you wanted these, your GovGuam, you wanted these, make sure in ADA. And ask DISIT, what do you think? And I agree with you, if there's any renovations, fix it, get ADA compliance. Any renovation, I believe, maybe we need to take a look at that, and maybe your office can recommend the law that governs that renovation. Maybe we need to tone it down a little bit and not be waiting for it to be a, a renovation of, of an office. You know what I mean? They, they can hide their renovation in some form to avoid ADA compliance. But it really concerns me, a very good example is where I'm at, Public Health is in, in the building I'm at, and there's a lot of folks that have disability that come there. And there's only so many, but I'm not gonna beat up my, my landlord and say, hey, where's your AGs? Because that should be the enforcer and DISIT's issue. Go and find out. But then go back to the permit process and say, Public Works. There are, I know for a fact, after so many parking stalls, you must have so many disability parking. Maybe that needs to be tweaked. Maybe that needs to be tweaked. Seriously tweaked, depending on the type of agencies that are in your building. I mean, if you're chiropractor, dental, and all those stuff, that you know you're gonna have this, a lot of disability show up, there should be more parking. That's how it needs to be tweaked. And I don't think you're gonna need that much, much more money, especially if we get it from the court. Yes, ma'am.
Senator, I, I, I agree. And I think what this bill, you know, specifically, I think the way around all that extra funding would be for every government agency, when they do do their specs for their RFP, indicate specifically that they need to be ADA compliant. They can even go as far as being even more specific, like with, for example, with DISIT, we moved one of our divisions down to a first floor, um, office space. Um, we're now located, um, right behind Big Hook in Agania next to Mescla. So that's all level one. But before moving into that building, with our RFP specs, we specifically stated what we wanted for ADA compliance in order to even, anyone to even get that award. So perhaps every government agency, public health, you know, anywhere, they need to also look at the specs, look at the constituents that they're, um, servicing, but also their employees and, and really retrofit that to the specs. So when they do the RFP, that the landlord is the person that really should be the ones to provide that accommodation.
Okay. So these were in agreement to the way the bill is written. It has nothing to do with filling you up with staff. Giving you staff and support and, and funding, that's a, that's a different part we need to work with. But I do believe, or I will be doing, is I'll be going to the court and finding out how much money you got there. And if that money's supposed to go to DISIT, let's get it to DISIT. So Mr. Warfield will be more comfortable when he goes out there and he doesn't go alone. And the reason why I say that is because that's the way it's supposed to work, or how it should have worked, or how it should work. You know, could have, would have, should have. Should have done it, could have done it, well, we're gonna try to figure out a way how to get it done. And with that, Senator Parkinson, do you have anything you want to close on this bill? Otherwise, we're gonna conclude this, the hearing on this bill.
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming here today for their testimony. You know, um, throughout this whole process, I want it to be a collaborative process. I'm not looking to point fingers or shift blame, really, there's just a problem that needs to be solved. And I don't care how we get to the solving of that problem, as long as ultimately the problem does get fixed. Um, you know, there's lots of ways to climb to the top of Mount Fuji, we'll find the right path. The issue with ADA compliance is there is just a lot of buildings that were grandfathered in. I know we don't like using that term, but that's what it is, they're grandfathered in. But that being said, so much time has passed since that initial passing that grandfathered or not, these changes should have been made or should at least be incrementally made in some degree. And this neglect of our ADA compliance, it's not something that happened overnight. This was a process that took years, if not decades. And, um, I hope it does not take us years to fix the problem, but our commitment to fixing it will be as such. So thank you for your testimony today and thank you everybody for your questions and your insights. Um, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for having this public hearing.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. But you know, we got to walk in, Evelyn, uh, Ms. Duenez, well, you know what I mean, you, you just came in for, you wanted to testify. We're gonna have, I won't allow you to testify, but it's gonna have to be, uh, because we're at the tail end already, okay, Ms. Duenez? Did you want to speak about the bill? Can, can somebody assist Ms. Duenez and bring her up closer? Can somebody assist Ms. Duennas and bring her up closer?
Normally, I don't do this. I just cheat out my staff. You don't allow nobody once right there. It's too bad.
Ms. Duennas, please state your name completely and then we'll get your quick testimony, okay? Thank you, Evelyn.
Good morning to all you senators. Thank you, Senator Parkinson and all you other senators for raising this bill back up again. I was late due to our unreliable transportation. So that's the main key that I'm late. As far as this bill is concerned, I believe all of you are aware that we do still have facilities that are not in compliance right now. And DISIT is well aware of these things. GRTA is one of them. I have no access to them. And they're all located on the second floor. Majority of the time when I go there, I would have to wait 15, 30 minutes, an hour for someone to come down because it's not in a accessible location. That has been brought to multiple attentions within the agencies, but nothing has been done. Especially now that there's no leadership over there. It's even out of control. So as far as ADA is concerned, although it was implemented, came into law in 1990, we really have not followed any of these things. And it's very unfortunate. We do have federal money coming in from various agencies that could result that issue temporarily, but that hasn't been done either. So key question to each and every one of you is how do we rectify these problems? And I'm already, I'm not getting any younger, honestly. I'm getting older and I'm getting, I'm at the point where I'm fed up being a critic to agencies in these areas because it's already a federal law as well as it's connecting into local law that it's a must. And we even have, sorry to say it, but we have senators' office that's also in locations that are not ADA compliant. And that is very unfortunate because again, we are aware of the ADA accommodations and disabilities, but sometimes that doesn't suffice. So we really need to work on making these better, not just for only individuals with disabilities, but we're all aging up there and why fiddle with it when most of you are already heading towards that direction, although not that old or young yet. But you know, we have to think out of the box. And a lot of us seem to not do that anymore. So we really need to look at agencies, especially government agencies that are not ADA compliant and get it into to an accessible location because it's just not working well, especially for me. I'll give you a real clip and then I'm done. December 8, I was down here in the cathedral. GPD had blocked my access. And I had to fiddle with it because the officer got upset with the driver. So I had to fiddle with it by advocating for myself because they blocked the access for me to get to the van in and on and off the van. And instead of being courteous and tactful in assisting, there was a confrontation. So you know, these are the things we really need to look at. And that was just on December 8. And blocking access as well is not viable. And I don't know if you senators are aware that I believe there's a law that created a, every agency has to have ADA compliance officer. And I have not seen that. So that probably needs to come back to assist every agency instead of having just DISIT go out and do those assessments. That was the purpose of the creation of that law is to have every agency and department deal with their own. As far as training is concerned, I think DISIT comes in and assists in that regard. But every agency should have their own compliance monitoring officer, if I remember correctly. So that concludes my testimony.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Duennas. You know, we already discussed that, that the Attorney General's office is the enforcer. We will communicate and advise him of your concern. Then he needs to go out there and start checking those places and finding out what's happening. And we've discussed also the funding for DISIT so they can continue promoting the role they play in reference to anyone with disabilities and so forth, okay? Thank you very much, Ms. Duennas, for coming. And with that, there's no one else to present testimony on this bill. This hearing is now concluded. It is now, the time now is 10:16. I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing and providing feedback and suggestions. Bill number 191-37COR, public hearing is now adjourned. Again, the time is 10:16. Sisus Mase, and please be safe and Merry Christmas to all. And with that, we will now take a quick recess for a few minutes and then we will begin with Bill 167-37. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Paris.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.